Ensure that we're all masked for our visitors in the chamber. The council is vaxxed and boosted, but it's still a policy for all visitors to be masked. If you could please at this time turn off any electronic devices or at a minimum, I'll put them on mute. As a reminder, again, please ensure that those, your phones are on mute. Our invocation tonight will be delivered by Pastor Sandy Alexis of First English Lutheran Church here in the city of Baltimore. Madam Pastor, the floor is yours.
Let us pray. God of new beginnings, of transitions, of hopes and dreams. We have come to a new year. Last year definitely brought some surprises. Some were life-giving and others were tragic. We know that life is messy and complicated, but we thank you for these people who seek to address the challenges that arise in Baltimore City. We ask you to bring wisdom to the assembled city council and help them to see challenges not only from the clarity of their hearts, but listening to a wide circle of wisdom from neighbors who often don't have a seat at the table and whose voices are not always listened to. We entrust to you the proceedings of this council meeting and ask you to send your Holy Spirit to inspire everyone here to balance their agenda with love, joy, peace, gentleness, kindness, goodness, patience, faithfulness, and self-control, the fruits of the Spirit. As we approach the day of honoring the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who encouraged service for community, we lift up our service to you, Holy God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Madam Pastor. At this time, if you could please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please read the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please note for the record that Councilman Glover is absent at the moment. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the journal for the December fifteenth, 2022 proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Now, we're going to go to bills signed by the mayor. It can be found on page two of our agenda. And now we will turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first nomination.
EA two-three dash zero-one-five-eight Matthew Matt Campbell, Executive Director, Baltimore Convention Center.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-five-nine Mary Sue Onaka, Member, Police Accountability Board, District fourteen.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-six-zero Ms. Chrisely L. De Los Santos Polanco, Member, Police Accountability Board, District one.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-six-one Harold Madison, Member, Police Accountability Board, District twelve.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-six-two Brian A. Upsher, Member, Police Accountability Board, District three.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-six-three Joshua Harris, Member, Police Accountability Board, District nine.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-six-four Deborah N. Austin, Member, Commission for Women, District four.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-six-five Candace Everett, Member, Commission for Women, District twelve.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-six-six Casey N. R. Brent, Member, Commission for Women, District one.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-six-seven Kimberly Haven, Member, Commission for Women, District one.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-one-six-eight Linda Davis, Member, Commission for Women, District four.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight as well. We will now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-two-eight, the supplementary general fund operating appropriation office of equity and civil rights for $2,388,311 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $2,388,311 to the Office of Equity and Civil Rights Service eight-four-nine Police Accountability Board to provide funding to secure the necessary staffing, equipment, technology, and training resources to support the Baltimore City Police Accountability Board and Administrative Charging Committee and to implement police accountability and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Mosby.
Sponsor on behalf of the administration, please assign this bill to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Bill two-three dash zero-three-two-nine Minor Curfew Conduct of Establishment Penalty for the purpose of increasing a certain penalty on the operator of an establishment for knowingly permitting any minor to remain on the premises during certain curfews for minors. Sponsor Burnett.
The body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill. Councilmember Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I think it's important to start with what this bill isn't trying to do. This bill is not trying to blame any business for the violence that took place at the Emmons and Villa Shopping Center last week and resulted in the death of one child and harming of four other young people. The person responsible for that violence is the person that pulled the trigger. And they're the ones that should be held accountable for this. However, I will note that there have been, in my district and I'm sure across the city, a lot of conversations prior to this incident occurring about young people leaving school campuses where their parents are expecting them to be all day and buying lunch or soliciting business off-campus. As it pertains to Emmons and High School, young people leaving the campus is a way of life. There are two buildings. And the only way you can get from one to the other with a career technology education program is by leaving the building. So they have to leave. There have been a number of community meetings about this, one just two months ago. There's been outreach to businesses at the Emmons and Villa Shopping Center. You'd have a hard time finding a single shop in that business that isn't aware of the curfew law. And I can only say this because I've been in every single one of them, posting signage, talking to the cashiers, talking to the management, talking to their owners about what the current law is. It is currently against the law to serve minors during school hours. It is not a new law. It is already on the books. Clearly, the fine amount, which is what this is proposing to escalate, isn't motivating businesses to follow Baltimore City law. And so in the same way that we have an expectation that, there's been a lot of debate about squeegee workers following the law. There's been a lot of conversation about people who are committing other acts of crime to follow the law. We're asking businesses to do the same thing. It is my hope that in the committee, that there'll be a lot of dialogue and discussion about how to get this right. Because it is not my intention to penalize businesses. But we do have to have a change in behavior. And it's my hope that by escalating the fine or taking other action in committee, whatever we can come up with, to change the behavior of businesses serving young people during the school day, already against the law, something has to change. And, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about, is it the school system's responsibility? Is it the police department's responsibility? I think everybody bears some responsibility, my office included, this body included, in protecting our young people. But at the end of the day, we need the business community to be partners as well. And I'm hopeful that this bill will spur conversation, will spur dialogue about how we can better work together to protect the young people here in Baltimore City. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. At this time, are there any additional co-sponsors? I see the hand raised, Councilwoman Odette Ramos. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if you could please go into resolutions.
City Council Resolution two-three dash zero-one-five-zero-R, informational hearing, crime at gas stations, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Deputy Mayor of Public Safety and relevant community groups to engage in a discussion with the city council regarding the recent rise in violent crimes at gas stations throughout Baltimore City, including a discussion of options to prevent or mitigate such occurrences. Sponsor Mosby.
Sponsor correction is actually Chairman Stokes. At this time, Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, in the last, I guess, four or five months, there have been some, a lot of violence at these... There's been a lot of violence at the gas stations and I just was watching what happened over Vice Town Road. And before we try to talk about closing business down, I think there should be a conversation between the community and those agencies that's in this resolution. I think it's important that we make sure that that conversation starts because we can be on TV and talk about shut something down. But I think if we talk about having an actual robust conversation to address it, that's why you see Monzi there? Because some of the young people, I guess, in my head, need some wraparound services or look for some employment. So that's the reason why they were included. So, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, we're going to suspend the rules. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Mr. Chair.
Without objection, the rules were suspended. I move for the adoption.
For the resolution to be adopted.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
There's a motion on the floor for the resolution to be adopted. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway...
This is not immediate adoption of the resolution.
No, I'm sorry.
You want to adopt, you don't want to suspend the rules.
It's a, it's a, it's a resolution to have a hearing.
Yeah, you don't want to suspend the rules, all right?
Okay, yeah, I was, no.
Okay, that's fine.
So it's just a regular resolution?
Yeah, so just ensure that this is going to be assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations as well. So it's not an immediate adoption. This was for an actual informational hearing. Again, this bill will be assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Are there any co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Councilmember Burnett, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman, Councilwoman Ramos, Vice President Middleton. Again, this has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. That concludes the bills to be introduced as well as resolutions. At this time, you can find the consent calendar, calendar in section A on the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved? It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the consent calendar is approved. Next up, we're going to go into third reading with no bills on second reader. We're going to turn it to third reading. At this time, the body would like to call on Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move you read short titles for third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we're going to be in short titles for duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the roll, the first bill. End roll.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-two-two-seven, zoning conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district four-three dash four-five South Carey Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-two-six-one, rezoning eight-zero-one South Haven Street, block six-four-five-eight slash lot zero-zero-four-A and block six-four-six-seven slash lot zero-two-one-A and a portion of block six-four-five-eight slash lot zero-zero-four. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-two-seven-six, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district, variances two-seven-two-two terrace, oh, sorry. A charterly terrace.
Akintu Raleigh.
Akintu Raleigh.
You're not the only one. Everyone does that.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill has been approved. I see a huge public servant that served in many different capacities. Family means a lot, particularly to West Baltimore and more specific to Akintu Raleigh. So I want to ensure that we said it right. So, welcome back, Marshall Bell, for joining us here tonight. Again, that bill is approved. Chairs, when you hear your committee, we're going to go into chair announcements. Please proceed with any announcements. First up, ECD, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours. No announcements. Next up, Education, Workforce, and Youth Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, Education, Workforce, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing. Council Resolution twenty-two dash one-three-seven-R, informational hearing hiring initiative for Spanish speakers on February the second, 2023, at ten a.m. at the request of Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to Health, Environment, and Technology. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing for Resolution two-two dash zero-one-three-one-R, informational hearing, animal abuse on Wednesday, February twenty-second, 2023, at ten a.m. The hearing will be held in the council chamber and also through WebEx. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we're going to Public Safety, Government Operations. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be hearing Bill number twenty-two dash zero-one-three-nine-R on Wednesday, February first, 2023, at one P.M. in this room. It's going to be the investigative hearing on human trafficking investigations and prosecutions at the request of Councilmember Burnett. And the committee will also hear Bill twenty-two dash zero-one-three-eight-R on Wednesday, February eighth, 2023, at one P.M. in this room. And that's going to be the informational hearing on the coordination between Police Commissioner, School Police Chief, and the Sheriff at the request of Councilmember Stokes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to go to Rules Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a few executive appointments hearings on Thursday, January nineteenth, at four P.M. And so I will start with EA twenty-two dash zero-one-five-one, Peter Boddy, then EA twenty-two dash zero-one-five-two Megan Kenny, EA twenty-two dash zero-one-five-three Stephanie Lee, EA twenty-two dash zero-one-five-four Antoine Burton, EA twenty-two dash zero-one-five-five Doris Minor Terrell, EA twenty-two dash zero-one-five-six Jamal Turner, EA twenty-two dash zero-one-five-seven Jasmon Riggins, EA twenty-three dash zero-one-five-nine Marzio Onaka, EA twenty-three dash zero-one-six-zero Chrisely D. Les Santo, EA twenty-three dash zero-one-six-one Harold Madison, EA twenty-three dash zero-one-six-two Byron Upsher, EA twenty-three dash zero-one-six-three Joshua Harris. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, and certainly not least, Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, at four fifty-nine P.M. That's four fifty-nine P.M. Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-nine-nine, tax credits, historic properties, application extension. On that same day, Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, at five P.M., the committee will hold a televised hearing on Charm TV. Resolution number twenty-two dash zero-one-two-six-R, informational hearing, East Baltimore Development Incorporated Audit, for the purpose of requesting that representatives from East Baltimore Development Incorporated, or EBDI, brief the city council regarding the status of the ongoing revitalization of an eighty-eight acre portion of East Baltimore and the upcoming forensic audit of EBDI, including considerations for auditor selection, community involvement, and clarification of financial outlay at the request of Councilman Stokes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we'll turn it over to regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements from the body? Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, as many of our colleagues, were I was dismayed to learn of the proposed cancellation of the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day Parade for this upcoming Monday, January sixteenth, at twelve noon. In the meantime, a number of us were hard at work. I want to specifically thank Councilman James Torrance, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, Councilman John Bullock, to try and figure out a way to make that happen in coordination with other individuals. Specifically, I want to thank the Fruit of Islam, We Our Us, as well as Sheriff Sam Kogan for providing public safety resources for that day to ensure a free flow of traffic, make sure pedestrians who are participating on that day, who are going to march either way, that they have a safe day. And hopefully, that would have cleared the field for the mayor's office to be able to move forward with the parade. Also want to specifically thank Mayor Scott. I know we had a number of conversations over the weekend, including late last evening, for coming to the correct conclusion about the need to have the MLK Junior Day Parade as it's a critically important piece of our cultural history in this city. So, looking forward to participating in that next Monday, again, January sixteenth, at twelve noon at the regular meeting location of MLK Junior Boulevard in Utah Place. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Knowing that this runs through one of the main arteries of your district, we appreciate your leadership for the council on this issue. Are there any additional community announcements? At this time, we'll recognize Councilman Burnett.
Mr. President, so January eleventh is Human Trafficking Awareness Day. And wanted to announce that the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative is hosting a community event on Wednesday, January eleventh, at six, from six P.M. to eight P.M. at Unity Hall, which is at fifteen oh five Utah Street. We will have acknowledgements, a human trafficking one-on-one training, onsite resources, and a lot more. We would like to acknowledge all of the victims, survivors, and individuals loved, who with loved, who've experienced human trafficking. We see you, we hear you, we're here to support you, and we're hopeful that the city of Baltimore will come out and support this crucial event. Fifteen oh five Utah Place, he might know. So that's the location. You can follow us on social media, Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, and the flyer is on there as well. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Costello.
And thank you, Councilman Burnett. I will take a privilege to say, yeah, thank you for your continued leadership on this issue. You've been at the forefront, one of the foremost experts in government throughout the state of Maryland in human trafficking. And the council truly appreciates all your leadership, ensuring that Baltimore City stays ahead of this ever-growing issue. Are there any additional announcements? Yes, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to ask for a moment of silence. David Cunningham, who was a dear public servant here in Baltimore City and DPW and DGS, has passed away. He's the brother of Bill Cunningham. Many of you know Bill, who is now on the, he was a former councilman and now on the zoning board. I was proud to represent David. He was my constituent and his, and his family. So if you could, if we can get a moment of silence for him and his family, that would be great. Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I just want to take a moment to thank Jason Mitchell for his service in the city, citizens of Baltimore, but also remind us that we must think about collaborative problem solving in this city. I just want to make sure we understand the improvements our men and women in DPW have made. And I just want to be strategic about that. The call times for water services, the number of complaints that have gone down in our offices, the number of men and women that we struggle to keep on the streets every week, the amount of time that we have spent in actually increasing salaries, the signing bonuses for staff. We are trying hard to restore these services, but I just want to make sure that we have oversight that is mindful and comprehensive of the improvements we've made and we congratulate our people on those successes. But think about the fact that our citizens are watching how we do this. Let me be frank. This agency is not going to be marked in our eyes overnight. The improvements that we've made have been collaborative and we must continue with collaboration. We're not going to get this done by ourselves. We're not going to get it done with just one person. But tonight, to the men and women of DPW, we see what you have done. We thank you for what you have done. And we will continue to do that work and be there for you and provide the resources for you to get your job done as well.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Councilman Glover, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. That means a lot to me. As many of you know that, I come from the Department of Public Works. I worked there for sixteen years. I worked in the State's Attorney's Office for six years. So I've been in city government for twenty-four years, including two years now on the city council. And it's not easy. It's not easy. I'm asking, Mr. Mitchell, you're watching this right now. I'm asking you to please reconsider. Because I understand the frustration you're going through. Understand this thing don't happen overnight. Understand that you came here during a pandemic. And I understand that the men and women, when I talk to them each and every day, they don't want you to leave. They want you to stay. They know that there's an open door policy while you're on that seat. We never had that in the past. So please reconsider it. And I ask that the administration to give DPW the tools that they need so that we can make sure that Baltimore brings back its charm. These men and women, we all know they want raises. We all know that they deserve raises. And they're not on a job because of the fact of the money, it's because they sincerely care about Baltimore. I'm a CDL driver. I could have been left and gone to MTA or BFF or Waste Management, but I chose to stick with the Department of Public Works because I care about my city. And they care as well. So I'm asking, Mr. Mitchell, if you're watching this now, that we don't want you to leave. We want you to stay. We understand that you was put in a situation where there was a pandemic and none of this was going to happen overnight. There are many agencies that we could point the finger to and call out those directors and ask them to resign. And I'm asking you to do not. Please reconsider. Majority of us on this council, because I can see from the shaking of the heads, we here for you, brother. We stand by you. And for the men and women of DPW, I will continue to fight for you guys as long as you allow me to be on this council. You will continuously have an ally in me on the Baltimore City Council. So again, I say thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Torrance, for standing up. I understand it. I've been there. I see what they see. I feel what they feel. And I understand it. I just need us on the council to feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Glover. At this time, Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I just want to talk about DPW workers during COVID. We always talked about the nurses and the doctors. But the trashmen, the water department, they was out there in COVID too. The problem is, we need some morale. You got a trash trucks that don't have air conditioning and they picking up trash in the summertime. When they get off from work, they don't even have a shower to go to before they go home. So they taking everything that they pick up and get on their clothing with them. I don't care how many directors you get, if we don't address getting some better trucks there that's going to have air conditioning. If we don't make sure our workers wear the mask, you got to wear the mask. But if we don't address those things I just mentioned, you can go get all the directors you want. I'm saying to the administration, make those workers whole. You got to take care of them. The morale ain't there. I just want to mention one thing. Along with the Franciscan Center in my district, we fed DPW workers. We fed sanitation workers the whole time during COVID because I know they felt like they was unappreciated. So to the administration, address those things in DPW right now. Because if you don't, you're going to get another director. And if it's haven't been addressed, it's not going to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. At this time, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you. So, well, first, I'd already sent this in to Council Vice President, asking for a moment of silence, but I did want to publicly ask a, for a moment of silence for Deontay Dorsey, was a student that lost his life at Emmons and High School. Also want to offer our condolences to the, to the family, the friends, the staff, the teachers, as well as the other young people who were also harmed that same day. None of this is easy, and I know that this entire council has their back moving forward. And so I just wanted to lift that up. And did want to second Councilman Torrance in this. I did have an opportunity to speak to Director Mitchell, and the real issues with his family are real. He's going through a very difficult time. So I'd also like us to keep his family in our hearts and minds. He, they have been, I don't want to say what they were going through right now, but they've been going through some very serious issues. And I would agree that I don't think that, you know, the call-
you know, the call for resignation was the right move to make. I believe that we, at this time in the city of Baltimore, need to be rallying around each other, need to be holding folks accountable, but more importantly, not destabilizing government. We have vacancies in the Department of Transportation, we have procurement challenges, we have vacancies in the city solicitor's office. Having another process in which we have to fill another vacancy at a time that the citizens need us the most, I don't think is the right move to make. And so, asking for support for his family at this time, and hopefully, and he will reconsider moving forward to stay with the city of Baltimore and continue to work because it's needed and it's crucial. Thank you.
No, thank you. We're going to go to you last, okay? Are there any other announcements? I'll just quickly say that I think the one thing that we've attempted to pride ourselves here in the City Council for the past two years is ensuring that we focus on substantive issues, ensuring that we stay away from the political fodder, the rhetoric. And we understand and know that our city has major challenges, but we also understand and know that as the City Council members, as the folks who are the only 15 individuals in this entire city that can utilize a pen to change laws, that we have the ability to effectively make change. I think that we've done an excellent job as relates to public safety and not utilizing that as a public football. That's always been an expedient path to mayorship in the city. That's always been the front page of the paper when it comes out of this council, and we've ensured that we continue to work with the administration as well as the police department, whether it be at DPW, Rexon Parks, or DOT, or even BOPA for this regard. I think it's important for us to continue to do that. I also think it's also important for us to ensure that we're educating our residents on facts. And when we speak from this floor, this chamber, it's important that we utilizing those facts, not necessarily information that we're gathering from a certain news station or from Twitter, but real information, because people expect us, as they are elected officials, to provide accurate information, particularly when we're on this floor. So, I think that we've had an excellent two years. This is the first meeting of our next two years, and I just wanted to put that out there, and I think that this is an appropriate time when we look at some of the events that have taken place over the past week. With that said, Madam Vice President, if you could add Mr. Edward, she also has a comment before everybody stands. If you could add Mr. Edward "Eddie" Rawlings to the list during the moment of silence.
And I just want to add, I guess, as the older person here, the dean of the council...
The dean of the Baltimore City Council?
I just want to remind everyone, a little bit of history of just something that all of you have said, and it's ironic that all this is happening at this particular time, that the trash pickup workers, sanitation workers, they led the march on Washington for, you know, MLK Day in their city. If you go back in history, and if you've ever had a chance to go to that museum, they were at the forefront of these parades, rallies, and marches. And I'm so glad that the mayor, and thank you, Councilman Costello, I want to thank Congressman Cummings for reiterating the importance...
And Fume.
I'm sorry.
And Fume.
The importance of us continuing these types of things. It's all about history, it's all about educating our young people, and Martin Luther King this particular day is about service, but those rallies and parades are all a strong part as well. We have participation right there on Utah that leads to our MLK Boulevard. There's a MLK Boulevard in just about every city in America. It's a very short, meaningful route. It's a route of remembrance, and I hope that we never have any misunderstandings like this ever again. This is just so, it's such an important history for the city of Baltimore. We have so much, so many roots in history here, and our young people have to continue to remember this history. As blacks and African-Americans, we have to remember our history was taken away from us, and things like this are just so important to remember. We have the Masons right there on Utah Place that are part of this. We have our sororities, vaterans, so many other nonprofits, and, you know, just people that are a part of this parade, and I'm glad that, you know, people met and to continue this measure on. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on that note...
If everyone could stand.
The next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, January 23rd, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the over-five victims of homicide this year, the many Baltimoreans who have died from COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic, and also for David Cunningham, Dante Dorsey, and the other students harmed and families and staff, keep them in prayer of Emerson Westside High School, and then also Nick Finkelstein submitted from the Fifth District Councilman, and Eddie Rawlings.
Thank you. There being no new business before the desk, this concludes the 48th meeting of your 73rd Baltimore City Council, Baltimore. We absolutely love you.